Good evening, everyone. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to take a second just to note the beautiful artwork that's in the back. Just so all of you know, our LifeSchools students did it under the direct direction of Andy Hornberger and Thomas Kimalary. So even when you leave this evening, please take a look at the beautiful artwork that our students did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Sorry for the slightly late start. We're going to start the evening with some wonderful news. We're going to start first with district recognition.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Villa, Executive Director for Human Resources. Thank you for giving me a couple of moments tonight to really give some recognition to two individuals who really helped to make an event very special this year. So I'd like to recognize Lori Minakozzi and Romi Bennett. Lori and Romi are being recognized tonight for their outstanding efforts in organizing the district's retirement party, an end-of-year celebration that was held at the Crescent Beach Club on May 21st. From the initial planning stages to the execution of the event, Lori and Romi played a key role in ensuring every detail was thoughtfully considered and smoothly coordinated. Their consistent communication, collaboration with our team, the venue, and their team, and their attention to detail greatly contributed to the success of the evening. On the night of the event, both Lori and Romi went above and beyond. Lori sat there and checked in all of our guests, welcomed and congratulated everybody. Romi floated around the room, making sure that every retiree and their guests felt welcome and a part of the event. It was a warm celebratory atmosphere that was truly special, and we got many compliments after the event that the retirees felt very special and recognized on this event. So on behalf of the Central Office team, our Board of Education, we thank them for their time, effort, and the spirit, and we look forward to continued collaboration as we plan the event for next year. Thank you, Romi and Lori.
Thank you. Last month, as you all know, we had our meeting, we had our budget vote, and we had our election. We thank everyone for participating in that and for passing next year's budget. There's somebody that the board would like to recognize this evening as well, who many of you may not know, but who we depend on entirely, and who ran a very successful operation behind that entire election and budget. So we'd like to recognize our district clerk, Allison, and thank her for everything that she does for us. And now, last but not least, on the recognitions, and very importantly, tonight is a very special moment. It is the last evening of one of our community members' final board meetings, who has served this district tirelessly, puts in hours that no one could ever possibly imagine, who loves this community, and who has, for the few years that I've been on the board, always helped me, always helped provide important information, history, context, and always kept her mind, first and foremost, on every single student that walks all of these halls. So it's a sad night because we're going to be thanking the one and the only Margaret Marshon. Yeah, anyone who would like, please.
I'm going to butt in for a minute because I can't let you leave without saying something. About six years ago, I was at a bar in Bayville at a parent council meeting, and I had a very big mouth, and I was a kindergarten mom, and this woman came up to me and said, "If you have so many ideas and you want to do so much, why don't you just get on the board?" And I said, "Okay." She called me and followed up and nagged me. Everybody in this role deserves a mentor, and I was blessed with the best. There is nobody better to teach anyone to sit in this seat better than Margaret Marshon. You lead with integrity. You have never relented on what is right, even in the face of tremendous adversity. And you should be extremely proud of your work, of your commitment, and your legacy that you've left. There's so much you've done, and you will be very much missed here.
So this morning is when I do my thinking, as anybody who's gotten my 6:30 in the morning text or phone calls. I was really kind of thinking about the first night that I sat at a table like this. It was a Meet the Candidate night, 2018. I did not want to run. I actually met with Romi Bennett and Joey Aneya, and I often joke I was the bottom of the pickle barrel. They had no one else to run that year, so I was it. And I sat at that table that night for Meet the Candidate night and listened and answered the questions. And I remember distinctly saying that "You may not always agree with me, but the decisions I make will always be in the best interest of children." I never realized those words would carry... I never realized those words would carry me through the next seven years. And probably the most trying time was through the COVID years. I think that Locust Valley has become a haven for protecting our children. I think that we stay in the middle. We stay in the middle of the road. We accept all. We love all. But we stick to the basics, and that is just growing great, smart, strong children that can lead and also become active members of society and use critical thinking and discernment. And to me, that's been the biggest role as a board member, and I'm honored to sit here with all of these people and with Dr. Turnow. You know, not many people, you know, sat through five different leadership styles. Dr. Janine Sampino was a superintendent for six months here, and we did it together. This district has gone through a lot, and I really, really hope that we're on a beautiful path forward that's steady and secure for our children. And I just, I love this community, and it'll always be my community, and I would lay down my life for this community. So that's how I felt, and that's how I led. So I thank you all, and it is with sadness, but with great relief to not have to come back in July. And I do just wanna say that these people up here and anybody before us and anyone after us who runs for this position, we do not get paid. We do not even get a tax break. Even volunteer firefighters get a tax break. We don't get health insurance kicks, which some elected officials in New York State get. This is truly because they wanna do the right thing. And after I leave here, I just ask that you always remember that when you go to blame, "Oh, well, doesn't the board know?" The board doesn't know everything, but I could tell you this, the board is always trying to do the right thing. And as community members, it's incumbent on you to not just sit back on your laurels and wonder what the board is doing, but it's for all of you to be active participants in this district. That's what these meetings are for. They are your meetings. They are public meetings. And I implore you to be engaged, because that is the only way we're going to continue to keep this district on a straight, narrow path. And I will add, end with this. I was at a field day today, and a parent that doesn't live in our district said to me, "I almost, I keep looking in Locust Valley because I know about your school district, and that's where I wanna be." And I think that that is really true. If you look at the real estate numbers, we hold our value, and it's because of this school district. It's because of the teachers, the administrators, the Board of Education, and most importantly, it's because of all of you in the community. So thank you, and thank you for indulging me on my little speech.
Sorry, we're not quite done.
Oh, no?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. We just have two little things for you. So this is kind of from all of us. So in case you weren't sure when Margaret started, it was in 2019. As you know, she's worked tirelessly for the school district, culminating her exemplary leadership as our Board Education President. For Margaret, this has always been more than a title. As a former special education teacher and a devoted mother of three, she embodies the spirit of unwavering advocacy for all children. She brought a unique blend of energy and an insightful perspective to this board. Drawing upon her extensive experience with community outreach and nonprofit organizations like Operation Democracy, her deep understanding that education is about the whole child, focusing on curriculum and instruction right alongside with social, emotional, and physical well-being, has helped foster a thriving environment where every student can flourish. Throughout her tenure, her commitment to sound Board of Education policy has always reflected the best interests of our students. An inspiration to all, Margaret's dedication to education is a continuous journey, not just for others, but for herself. We remain incredibly proud of her acceptance into the prestigious Educational Leadership Program at Stony Brook University, where she has spent the past year furthering, expanding her knowledge and refining her incredible leadership skills. Margaret, you have passionately championed a voice for every student in our community of learners. On behalf of the board and the entire district, we thank you for your dedicated service, and we wish you the very best of an exciting new path. And we do have two little things for you.
So Tom, you have to come get a picture.
Okay, continuing with our evening, our next order of business, we will have a public hearing. Annually, we need to have a public hearing regarding our district-wide safety plan and open the floor for any public comment on the district's safety plan that's been posted. So there's been no public comment. Do we need to formally adopt it, Allison? No? Okay, stays up for 30 days. Excellent. Okay. So please, the plan is on our website. Review it. If you have any questions, please submit them, and then we will implement it come next month. Moving forward, we're gonna move on to reports on the board. We have the LV History Bowl team update.
Hello. My name is Dominic Spina. I'm a member of the History Bowl team. This year, we came back and we won third in the nation for small schools. So it was a really big accomplishment for us, and I believe that we can go even further. I'm proud of the team we have, and we're gonna keep growing. Thank you.
I am Jacob Jankowski. I'm also on the History Bowl team. I'm very proud with what we accomplished this year, and I believe that if we keep putting in more hard work, we can go even further, as Dominic said.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Joseph Fanea, the Coordinator of History, English, and Business. And I'm here with actually two wonderful groups of students who have been very successful for us this year. So the History Bowl that they just mentioned is led by Kimber Smith. Kimber has worked tirelessly with this group, and they traveled down to Virginia, right? Or Washington? Washington, DC, where this event was held, where they took third in the nation. And the next group that I'd like to introduce, no stranger to our podium, is the Model UN Crew, who just had another outstanding tournament season, and they are led by Dr. Michelle Gaglione.
How are you guys doing today? I'm Wyatt Thorgrimson. I came and spoke before you in March, and I am the President of the Model UN Club. And here is a quick update on the successes we've had since we last came and spoke to you. In April, a group of 20 freshmen and sophomore, our underclassmen in the club, went to Malvern High School and won two Best Delegates, four Outstanding Delegates, and two Honorable Mentions as our underclassmen, which is an amazing thing. Then, the middle school delegates went to the GCI Model UN Convention in New York City, and they won two Best Position Paper Awards, and they got to sit in the General Assembly of the actual United Nations. A great piece of progress for our lower and coming-up people. In May, we brought 20 delegates to Herrick, to Herrick's High School, and it was our most successful conference yet. Out of the 11 best delegates we could win, we won eight best delegates, and we additionally won an honorable mention. This so far has been a major, major win for the club and represents our most substantial win we've gotten this year or in any year of our club's history. Already, we are looking forward to next year and planning the logistics behind going to a conference at Cornell. Additionally, we've been invited to host or attend a scrimmage with Portledge and Wheatley in October, just between our schools as a prestigious event. We also are continuing our tradition to have an in-house conference for our Model UN classes in November. We extend our sincere gratitude to the board for their continued support and investment in our Model UN program, as without you guys, none of this could have been possible. And without continued support, none of this will continue to be possible. The students' dedication and hard work have yielded impressive results, and we are committed to maintaining this level of excellence and even improving on it in the continuing academic year. Our recent achievements demonstrate significant growth since our last report in March, and we look forward to building upon these successes and proving, or providing our students with even more opportunities for growth in the field of international relations and diplomacy. Thank you guys so much for your continued support, and please, have a great summer.
Very impressive, all of you. And that's some beautiful hardware you're all taking home with the gavels and your trophy.
Congratulations again. Moving on, we have the Superintendent's Report.
So I'm going to invite Mrs. Villa up for some exciting news.
Thank you. Part of our Personnel Action Report for this evening includes appointments of new probationary teaching staff that we are really excited about. We are always excited to welcome our new staff as we begin planning for the school year. And so at this time, I'm gonna call up each of our new teachers to come up and be recognized by our Board of Education. The first person I'd like to call up is our middle school, high school speech teacher, Cole Castro. Next is our middle school, high school family and consumer science teacher, Amanda Hanham. Next is our Bayville Primary School Psychologist, Melissa Madavich. Next is our Bayville Elementary Teacher, Jessica Caracciola. Next is our LVI Elementary Teacher, Amanda Basteau. Next is our high school psychologist, full-year leave replacement, Melanie Popovich. And one of our teachers was not able to be here tonight, Ian Walsh, a high school science teacher. So welcome to our Class of Beginning 2025-2026 School Year New Teachers to the Locust Valley School District.
Thank you all for coming tonight. So this is my closing for the end of a school year, and I really thought about this. So I'm just gonna read it. "As we gather here tonight, there's a special energy in the air, a mix of excitement, accomplishment, and anticipation for the summer days ahead. It's a time to reflect on a school year filled with incredible growth and success for our students. Looking out at all of you, I'm filled with an immense sense of pride for what we have achieved together. Our new reading and writing program, school-wide, has been successfully implemented, and our teachers have not only enjoyed their time learning this program together, but feel confident with their new learning. The leader in me at both Bayville Primary and AMP is now a permanent program in our schools, and next year, both intermediate schools will implement it fully. Our upperclassmen were exposed to many challenging courses, and we are so proud to see how many students were recognized for so many awards, such as the Senior Award Night, Top 15, Athletic Awards, etc. Tonight is my distinct honor to celebrate some of the shining stars within our own professional family, our exceptional educators. First, I am absolutely thrilled to announce that Anne and Mozy's will be recognized by Newsday in their Teaching Spotlight section. This new feature was specifically developed to shine a light on exceptional teachers all over Long Island, and they certainly found one in Anne. Her picture will be taken, and she will be interviewed, sharing the passion and dedication we see from her every single day. This is a well-deserved honor. And accolades don't stop there. Please join me in congratulating Wendy Carswell. This Thursday at 12:30 PM, Wendy will be celebrated at the NASTEC NASTAR Celebration at Hofstra University. Wendy was chosen by her own colleagues at Locust Valley for this prestigious award. For those who may not know, NASTAR is the Nassau Association of School Technologists Award, and the recipients are chosen for their innovative, their ability to seamlessly integrate technology, and for their exemplary leadership in the field. Wendy, you're a true pioneer, and we are so proud of you. These recognitions are a powerful reminder of the extraordinary talent and commitment that define our faculty. As we look to the coming days, I am personally looking forward to seeing so many of you at our moving up and graduation ceremonies. These are the moments we cherish, the pinnacles of our students' hard work, and our collective support as a community. They are truly the best days of the year, and I cannot wait to celebrate with all of our families. Finally, I want to give a special shout-out to our incredible parent council. Their dedication helps make so much possible for our students. They have organized a fantastic fundraiser on the 18th for Community Day at Adventureland. It's a wonderful opportunity for us to connect, have fun, and support our schools. I hope to see many of you there. Thank you again, and once again, thank you for a truly remarkable school year. Have a wonderful, safe, and joyful summer.
We're now gonna move on to an update on our cell phone policy. As you all know, we've been singularly focused on this and on getting our students back to pen and paper, right? And being present with their friends, not being glued to screens, not messaging, but really having person-to-person conversations, play, work together. So, Patrick? So Patrick?
So thank you. There's great energy tonight in this meeting, and I plan to keep the momentum. First of all, I want to just welcome, I see Cole here, who's joining the high school, Amanda here, who's joining the high school, Melanie kind of snuck away. But I want to welcome them, and I want to thank you guys for kicking off tonight. Thank you to Michelle. There's no greater feeling as an educator at the beginning of your career to have the job for September and have that commitment and to be able to mentally prepare in the month of June and have that summer ahead. So thank you to the board for getting this agenda together tonight, and welcome to that crew. Secondly, Margaret, I don't believe it. I think next year, you'll be right back, or two years. So I don't believe it, but I do want to say thank you. I want to say thank you personally. Margaret Marchand was on my interview committee. Probably many interview committees, so I thank you to be in part responsible for me being here. I think that same night, she suggested La Ginestra, or it was an Italian restaurant recommendation she gave me. And then over the years, you've been really so generous with your time and your commitment to everything at Locust Valley High School, to my colleagues, most importantly, the students. I believe that we handled COVID pretty well, and I, I, I reflect on that, and that had a lot to do with your ability to rally the Locust Valley High School community of parents. And as a school leader, I was along for the ride. So thank you. But congratulations to a truly generous person. I thank you for all that you've done for me. And just before I go into the cell phone, I told you I wanted to keep the momentum. I want to congratulate our students. As the son of a history teacher, I can't wait this Sunday on Father's Day to share with my dad our national success in the History Bowl. So really excited. And everyone here should know that one of the highlights that didn't get, it got mentioned tonight, but one of the highlights of Dr. Gaglione and her crew, one of the best things I see each year is the high school and middle school partnering together. And the biggest issue is Michelle driving everybody crazy because we can't provide enough spaces. And these groups of students from like twelve year, twelve, twelve years old to eighteen years years old are tucked away in all areas of the building. And every few minutes, you hear like a gavel banging, and it's great stuff. It's really everything that we would be proud of in education. So congratulations and thank you. Okay, so the cell phone policy. So tonight, I just want to give a glimpse. I want to thank the board. Locust Valley has been out in front. I think I actually tried to maybe slow down the process a little bit. But the group of people up front in the room here tonight have been out in front on Long Island and in New York in terms of prior to any policy, the conversations have been happening. And our Board of Education and supervisors have said, hey, let's get going with this. If this isn't the best interest of students, we don't need to wait for a mandate or a regulation. So one, thank you for being out in front with policy, with discussions, with conversations. Number one, two, thank you for the flexibility, and thank you to deferring and saying, Patrick and Locust Valley High School, what do you think would be best? And whether or not I think we got it right or wrong in terms of our steps, I think it was an important message to us that I was able to bring to the students that we're going to start small, or we're going to start in incremental steps and say that the phones have to be away in instructional spaces, and we'll give you some flexibility in the study halls and in the cafeteria. That was an important step. Whether or not it was a hundred, hundred percent successful, I love the messaging that you guys sent to me and to my colleagues and the message that we then in turn shared with the students that we're going to take steps, and we're going to expect certain things, and then we'll continue to look at it. So I think that's important, saying that out, out in front, that I appreciate you guys taking steps. The second piece I just want to mention is, one of the concerns I have in this discussion is that I find groups of people talking about the phones more than the students. So I would remind us all, and I'll take the lead on this in terms of the high school, let's just keep talking about what's best for students, and the phones is secondary. So what is best for students? So New York State enacted, New York State enacted a policy, and I'm just going to read here, has implemented a statewide bell-to-bell ban on cell phones, meaning no phones can be used or possessed during the school day. This ban also applies to all internet-enabled devices, including personal laptops, smartwatches, but not school-issued devices. So what are we essentially saying? That from in our building, from seven forty-five to two thirty-nine, from the beginning of first period to the end of ninth period, phones are not permitted. They're not permitted. It's not that they have to be at a, they're just not permitted. That's the non-negotiable, that's the regulation, or that's the policy. Is it, are phones permitted? When I have a student that I meet with once in a while, and he uses his phone to show his blood sugar levels, that's permitted, that makes sense. That's a health, that's a resource, that's a tool. The state makes exceptions or exemptions when students need a device for health or other reasons. The third piece is parent communication. Schools are required to provide parents with a way to contact their students during the school day. I'll speak a little bit more about that. But those are the what-to-know pieces and why. The reason for the ban is to reduce distractions in the classroom and improve engagement. There's a lot of, you know, there's certainly a lot of data on how students can reconnect with one another or connect with one another when we lose the distraction of cell phones. I don't believe you will find many people in our building that feel like students' academic performance is greater if we allow them to have phones. And the last piece is that we spend, and this is okay, it's not about the time that we spend, but we spend a lot of time. But more importantly, students are hurt by some electronic exchanges that happen. And that's, that's probably the most important piece on that slide. So for those reasons, we have some regulations, we have some deliberate, intentional pieces. And I'd like to just share tonight a glimpse of what this looks like and maybe some background. But I also want you to know that the end of the year is a great time for us to set up the next year. And over the next two weeks, I think it's on the twentieth, we have a meeting with parents. In a few days, we have a meeting with the student group. And one of the best things about our end-of-year faculty meeting is the opportunity for feedback. And we've spoken about the need to create a teacher-like task force committee or a staff task force committee, and we'll do all those things. And anybody who wants to be part of the discussion, whether you're fourteen years old or approaching retirement, anybody who's interested will be welcome to the conversation. Okay, the success of the ban is directly related to the cooperation and partnership among everyone involved with our school. Brené Brown is somebody who I think usually has wise words. I love when she says that clear is kind, clear is kind. I think that's something that we want to take pride in in the high school, that our messaging to students in person and our communication on paper to families and to the community needs to be clear on this. And that's kind, that's clear, that's appropriate. We started this messaging about the phones. I joined the Board of Education Committees and Discussions in the summer of 2023. So I think our messaging and letter communication was very clear, and now we have the foundation. One of the pieces that we're pivoting is that the distraction-free focus at Locust Valley High School is not just classes, it's in this, during the school day. So that's a pivot for us. When we first came out with the discussion with students, it was in academic classes, and now we're pivoting this June, this summer, and going forward in that this is going to be a distraction-free environment from bell to bell. One of the pieces in the top half of that slide, the last two bullets that I think are critical, that I, I feel really proud about is our approach to safety and communication. I heard, I spoke with some middle school staff members, and I said, you know, what are the, what are the issues that you think come up? And one element at the forefront was, well, parents worried about safety. So I think one of the goals for all of us should be this continuous and routine with the head of safety, with our staff, continuous, ongoing dialogue with parents and students about our approaches to safety. If we continue to build confidence in our approaches, I think that becomes less of an issue. The second piece is access to phones. We really have plenty of access. And not only is access the issue, I sometimes go to places where I have access to the phone, but I don't come across people that are very kind surrounding that access to those phones. We take a lot of pride in the idea that everyone, we should have a first-class approach for everyone. And I think that's a line that you hear among our staff, clerical staff. One of the things I feel like our clerical staff are experts in are being patient and kind and understanding that if somebody calls and the caller is not his or her best self, it's probably something emotional that has to do with his or her child. And that's an important piece that ties into cell phones because we want students to feel welcome to come in and use phones in, in offices. So let me just pivot and say that before we finalize discussions, before our leadership team is final, going into the twenty-five, twenty-six year, what I believe Locust Valley High School will look like in terms of phone is movement around the school without, without backpacks, without bags, no phones, use of the lockers. We have probably seven or eight out of ten students who don't use lockers now. So this is going to be, we're going to go back to lockers. I don't believe that we should be buying devices. You know, there could be differing opinions, and I'm, I'm pretty open. But I believe we have the devices that we need. We have a locker for every student. And if a student's not comfortable with the locker location, we have another location for the student. We're not short of lockers. We have plenty of locations. We want it to be convenient. We have a great community. I had a conversation today with someone who said, you know, students don't even lock their lockers. And, you know, I feel like it's the same way with the bike rack. You can lock your locker or not, but the phone is going to go in the locker. We have the device that we need. I'm not requesting any special funds or purchases of pouches or devices. We have what we need. So next year at Locust Valley High School, use of lockers by students, movement around the building without backpacks or bags throughout the school day, and encouraging student, I hear this term a lot lately, you know, be where your feet are, or be, you know, be in the moment, live in the moment. And I think that's kind of like one of the overriding things that we hear a lot during the cell phone topic. Let's have students live in the moment, among others, whether it's students and staff. The last piece on the slide that I think is important is, you know, addressing related matters. What are our approaches with students who maybe don't cooperate or don't comply? The approaches are exactly what, what you, what I, what all of us in our community should expect. They're kind, they're respectful, they, they're demanding, and they're reasonable, and they're progressive. So you have a dialogue with a student, you have a dialogue then with a student and a parent, you have a confiscation, you have a student picking a phone up at the end of the day, you have a student and a family picking a phone up at the end of the day. So when I say progressive, those are some of the steps that I think about. Confiscation, pick up at the end of the day, parent involved when appropriate, and just continuing to be progressive about it. Ensuring that students understand not just the policy for the, but the reasoning for them, getting students around the table to talk about. Our students' voices at the high school level right now are greater than ever. Students want to be part of the conversation, and I believe in whole will support this and be positive about the situation. And we'll collect data and make any pivots that we may need to make. Okay, so just closing out a few of the topics without extending too far. Number one, I mentioned we have three meetings coming up. So we'll close out the year with providing an opportunity for the staff to volunteer to be part of a team or to give some feedback. We have some dynamite students who've been part of our site-based committee coming in in the next two weeks. And lastly, I think it's Monday of next week, we have our parent council, two parent council presidents who are coming in to meet with us, and this will be an agenda item. One of the things that many people I'm sure notice when they drive up to our school is I don't see too many schools that have Adirondack chairs, umbrellas, embossed umbrellas. And I, I, I want everyone to know that. That started with our parents. It's not that we tried to be overzealous or irresponsible with funds. It started as a combination with, one, our technology classes building Adirondack chairs, and then our parents in the community wanting to add to the seating and saying, hey, we believe this is something we can chip in. If we buy one, two, or three chairs each year, we can really have a nice setup. We've added some tables, we've added the umbrellas, and the result is that more than ever, our students are outside. So I think, I bring that up because I'm really appreciative of Eric's work and kind of work with the team to try to build some beautiful outdoor spaces. We want our students to go outside. They should be outside. Being outside, away from a phone that's in a locker, is, is really like a dynamite situation that I believe helps the students in the, during the periods before they go outside and when they come back into the building. So let's continue to team up as a group and as a community to build the outdoor spaces to provide projects and activities for students. It's funny, I once got a call at night, Patrick, somebody's stealing an Adirondack chair. I want to show you the video. And it was actually just a student coming back at night with his dad in a truck to pick up the Adirondack chair he had built. It was his own chair that was out front. Sorry, sorry for digressing there. All right, so Amy Watson has really been proud to work with Amy. Amy said, Patrick, I think we're going to have to like re-acclimate seventeen-year-old students to coming in and using their locker. So that's, that's just another piece that we're probably going to welcome students into the building and have a little bit more activity in the late August days where students, where we say, hey, come on and get yourself set up. Maybe it's kind of like a different approach, but we want them to get comfortable with their locker, you know. I, I don't think this is the year to like cut back on locker decorating or fire code issues. Like, I think we want to encourage them to use the locker. So that's one piece that will come up. I mentioned the emergency notification. Parent Square has been a real upgrade for us. And I think one of the responses that we should all have in our repertoire when parents say, well, what about emergency notifications? I think Parent Square is really going to help with that as opposed to an email or a call getting lost for a parent in the community. And the last piece, which I take a lot of pride in always, maybe too wordy, but I always take a lot of pride in the format and the timing. But we're definitely going to have well-organized and delivered communications to the school community about this topic that will be, will be packaged up with the opportunity for families and students to comment. So just to close out, our goal is to have, to, to be in a school that's safe and fosters productive, the best possible productive learning environment for people, for all people. The last thing is this, this idea of this Latin phrase that I've heard recently, I don't know if you guys have heard this, amor fati. Some of you guys maybe have heard this also, but it's pretty interesting. It's, it's a Latin phrase that means an attitude where one accepts and even embraces experience in life, regardless of feeling it, whether it's positive or negative, as being essential and valuable. I think that's a pretty interesting term that I probably will share with the students in September, that it's, sometimes we accept the fate of a circumstance and come to appreciate it as being important in our growth, whether we initially see it as positive or negative. Amor fati. So, and it makes me sound a little smarter than I am. I think that's an important message to, to our students that, that we want them to feel comfortable. And even if they're uncomfortable with this at the start, that we're going to grow together, and it'll be, be a better situation in the long run. So let me pause there. Comments or questions or thoughts on the topic?
Patrick, I just want to commend you for taking this step. And I want to share with you that I think when these conversations first began between us as a board and members of the administration, I think you helped to really ground us in the reality of the situation, right? In, in terms of encouraging us to take a more calibrated approach when it came to the high school. And we learned through you. So I think we've been on this journey together. I'm grateful to you for your partnership. We, this Board of Ed is here to fully support you and your team as you implement this over the course of the year. And we are also here to support parents as they go through these changes and to answer any questions they may have about why we're moving in this direction. State regulation is a big reason. But as you said, we have been on this journey for a couple of years, and this board and this team and this district has really been out in front. So thank you. Together, we're giving our children the gift of presence, the gift of situational awareness. We're helping them reestablish their connections with their peers. And I just think there is a world of good to come from this. So really, really appreciate you taking this step. Love your plan, it's very thoughtful. And I just, I thank you very much. We look forward to the year.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
We're gonna move on now to board reports, starting with Audit Committee.
Sure, thanks, George. Just a brief report. The Audit Committee met earlier today to discuss some of the audits that we have underway here at the Locust Valley School District. By law, we're required to attend to a variety of different audits, one of which we refer to as an external audit, which is a process where an auditor reviews the financial statements, you know, cash balance, reportings of our school district, and presents findings to determine whether or not they present our finances fairly. Another type of audit is what we refer to as an internal audit, and that is where we, as a district, kind of self-identify certain risk factors that an organization such as ours might have exposure to. For example, whether or not we purchase goods or materials the right way, whether or not we properly account for them. There are a variety of risk factors that school districts assess and essentially pick a particular factor for a year. And for this year, we, in conjunction with the auditor, with the internal auditor, have selected the topic of payroll. So we're gonna be having payroll, a payroll audit done to ensure that, you know, everybody's been paid correctly and there's no improper payments. Both the external and the internal audit processes are underway. We've been advised that the results should be delivered to us sometime late summer, and thereafter, we'll report the findings back to the public sometime probably in September. And that's it.
Thank you. Budget and finance, we'll take one month off, Karen, and we'll pick up next month, starting the next budget. Curriculum Committee?
Sure, thank you, George. So as a reminder for the community, the Curriculum Committee, our charter is to build relationships with our administration, Dr. Sampino, to ask questions, to learn, and to ultimately review and approve district-wide curriculum. It is a terrific partnership. I stepped up his chair this year under Lauren Themis's tutelage, so she really sort of grounded me in what we were seeking to achieve as part of this committee. I am grateful to her guidance there. I think in terms of what we covered last time around, there are a couple of things that I would hit on tonight. Number one, we proudly introduced a new segment to our Curriculum Committee, and we're calling that an ed tech teach-in. So as we all heard through Mr. D. Clemente's presentation on cellphones for the incoming school year, we are really looking critically and carefully in partnership with the administrative team on the utilization of educational technology in our classrooms. And we're working together to really ask, is ed tech providing for us the educational outcomes that we seek? Is it improving test scores? Is it strengthening soft skills? Is it helping our children to better communicate? Is it making them better at math and reading and writing? So as we're more thoughtful about that approach, we think we will continue to work together with the administration, along with the community feedback and our own recommendations, to, again, calibrate how different elements of educational technology are utilized in the classroom. We together watched a 20-minute video from an activist named Sophie Winkleman. She is a UK-based activist on lowering the utilization of ed tech in the classroom. She makes very compelling arguments. It was an enjoyable presentation, you can catch it on YouTube. And one anecdote that she shared with everyone to ground her conversation was how she sat on a bus in London and watched two young 20-somethings, a male and a female, who were professional and looked like they would be great sort of getting to know one another out on the dating scene. And when she peered over their shoulders to see what they were both looking at, they were on dating apps, next to each other on a bus. She watched them exit the bus and thought, there's a couple to never be, because they did not lift their heads from their phones to even acknowledge the existence of one another. That really set the stage for the entire argument, speaks to everything that Mr. D. Clemente spoke to about what we wanna achieve in the high school with the bell-to-bell cellphone ban. But in addition to ed tech, a lot of people are beginning to refer to ed tech as big tech in a backpack. So we wanna consider, continue to be thoughtful. We have asked the administration to look at significantly reducing the utilization of Chromebooks in our K through 2 classrooms. We're pretty much, they're pretty much out of kindergarten, but continuing to reduce their use in first and second grade. And also continue to look at things like gamification, use of gamification in the classroom, how much homework is actually administered or done on a Chromebook at home as opposed to in a notebook or on paper. These are things that we look forward to hearing back from the administration on. And again, this is a continuous journey, and we learn as we go. And I just wanna thank you, Dr. Sampino and your team, for being open to doing this, because, again, this is, big technology in the classroom is something that is being pushed from all dimensions, and we do have to be considerate of the fact that our testing is done through these modalities. So we are realistic, but careful, I think we would put it that way. In terms of just some of the other things we covered on, we talked about summer reading lists. I would like to thank all of our district librarians for putting together very thoughtful, concise, meaningful summer reading lists for their student bodies this year. I see Romy, I just, was a really great list, great book selections, and really, you know, interesting tide activities, something that I could really wrap my head around, so thank you. And we also discussed the evolution of LEAP, the LEAP curriculum continuously sort of under review, constantly seeking improvement and more cohesive, integrated experiences for students through LEAP. And then we also discussed professional development planning and graduation requirements and pathways. So, again, thank you to Lauren Themis, to Dr. Sampino, and to other members of our administration for joining us for our last committee meeting for the year. Look forward to regrouping for the 2025-26 school year.
Thank you. We're going to go a little out of order and skip facilities, 'cause we have a couple of, we have a bit of a longer presentation tonight that Eric is gonna take part in. So Policy Committee?
Just very briefly, I just wanted on the record that there is a policy that is out there. It's the Student Board Member Ex officiado policy, and I just wanted on the record that the Board of Education or the Committee for Policy has not once but twice sent it back and told the lawyers that they're not interested in passing that policy. It is a law that we have to have student representation, which we always have had, and this, the recommendation of the Policy Committee is that we do not need that in policy, because we already do it. And the student representatives that we've always had have been elected by their peers. So I just want that as a matter of record before I leave the board, as well as there's a policy 5280 interscholastic athletics. I have requested that be put on in its original form twice now, and it has not made it to the first read. So I have the original form, and I would like to put that forward when we do the first read. I believe we might need a motion to do that, but it's one that's been in the packet, and everybody knows about it. I just wanna put it forth this meeting.
Thank you. Public Relations and Communications?
Hi. We did have a brief Public Relations Committee meeting. I think the conversation continues to be on accessibility of information, making sure that our website is clear, concise. One of the steps that we'll be working on is to enable staff emails to be accessible to parents. Right now, you can only send like an email form through the website. Sometimes parents have to send emails to multiple staff members, multiple teachers, so that is something that they'll be working on. And we're also putting together our PR and media plan for 25-26, and more to come on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Technology Committee?
No report.
Thank you. Any other reports to the board?
Just the Health and Wellness Committee did meet. They had their final meeting this year. I will commend the Health and Wellness Committee. I've been on it now for five years, and a big focus is always on the nutritional information and the nutritional value of the meals that we're putting out into the community for our students. One of the big conversations was sugar. That was a big topic of conversation this past meeting, how many grams of sugar are in some of the snacks? What are some of the opportunities that we have to provide some different snacks options for students that may be a little bit of a better health choice? And also, what mechanisms do we have in place to allow parents to either opt in or opt out, especially at the elementary level, to allow their children to purchase those extra snacks? So that's an ongoing conversation, but definitely an important one.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to Facilities. One additional update that we're gonna add, so we were set to redo the middle school, high school parking lot and bus loop this summer. And there are a number of factors that have come up as we've been doing this. And for that, there's three main factors that are forcing us to push this off. We have, as long as I've been on this board, under Margaret, as well as our former trustee, John Del Tato, who kinda mentored me in the facilities projects, we take our fiduciary responsibility on costs very, very seriously. And we push, and we push, and we push on every single project that comes across our desks. And this project, we, I think we did a total of three bids. We went out, we got a revised bid, we went out again. The pricing just isn't coming into what we have budgeted. That's factor number one. Factor number two is that the scope of our project basically requires us to spread the project over a couple of years. So we really wanna take an additional hard look at that and make sure that A, our scope is really what we want it to be, and B, try to get it done within one summer rather than breaking it up over two summers. The third factor is, and I just suddenly lost my train of thought, there's a third factor, it was cost, it's timeline, and the third factor is also the overall aesthetic of the parking lot. We wanna take one more look at the overall plans and designs. We're concerned that as it stands right now, we could be losing some of the charm and greenery and the appreciation that we have for our entire landscaping in exchange for adding much-needed parking spots. But we wanna make sure that we're really maximizing that design. So for that reason, unfortunately, we are pushing that, but Eric is here to tell us not only all the stuff that's been accomplished this year, so folks have an idea, but also what's gonna be going on this summer. Thank you.
All right, we're good. All right. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Eric Nakatavichus, the Director of Facilities for the District. I wanna thank the board for allowing me to provide you guys with an update on some of the highlights that we've done for the 24-25 school year in the Facilities Department. So 24-25 saw the completion of numerous capital improvement projects. I would say the most visible was definitely the installation of the new bleachers, press box, feel light, and the lit pathway to the field. This project was completed using four separate contractors in order to reduce the cost to the district, and I think the project turned out pretty great, and I hope you've all had a chance to experience a night game, 'cause I think it's a pretty special event, and I think it's a great addition to the community. The next was the tennis court turf. This was done in an effort to eliminate the unsafe playing conditions that were caused by the cracking on the original courts, and we completed this installation prior to the tennis season beginning, which was great. The tennis court, tennis turf is now not only used by the tennis teams, but also by our life skill students and our gym classes throughout the day. Some of the less noticed, but definitely still important, capital projects that were completed were the replacement of the middle school roof. This corrected numerous leaks that we had in the area. The replacement of the sidewalk curbing and asphalt in the front circle at BI. We milled and repaved the asphalt along the arrival dismissal area at Ann MacArthur. And finally, we completed the renovation in the middle school, high school girls locker room. That renovation made the space much more functional for both students during the school day and for athletes after school. Next, I'm gonna quickly go through some larger-scale projects that we've completed through the district. District-wide, we completed epoxying of the floors in all of the kitchens with the exception of Ann MacArthur, which will be done this summer. We've also completed the majority of the bathrooms throughout the district as well. These epoxy floors make it much more sanitary than the tiles were in the past and easier to clean for us. On the security front, we replaced all of our Raptor visitor management units, which were end-of-life, and we replaced them with new Verkata visitor management units. These now tie into our camera and card access system, which is very helpful to us. Finally, district-wide, we completed the addition of air conditioning to all of the elementary cafeterias. The middle school, high school cafeteria air conditioning will be addressed when we redo the cafeteria here next, the following summer, 2026. At the middle school, high school, we completed numerous projects. These are some of them, but not all of them. The installation of new carpeting in this auditorium, the replacement of the hallway ceilings and installation of LED lighting in the middle school. We completed the repairs of the majority of the cracked terrazzo in the hallways. Our maintenance staff did a great job installing two new lampposts at the concession stand, which will be utilized during night games. You can see that in the bottom-left picture there. We just took that a couple days ago. We installed new inherently flame-resistant curtains in the mini theater. We created a new robotics area in the high school library, and we installed two new paper patio areas in the middle school research area, which are both outfitted with picnic tables and umbrellas. At Ann MacArthur, we added new security doors to the all-purpose room, installed drop ceilings and LED lighting in the main office, and we had our maintenance staff paint all the hallways and door frames to give the building a new, fresh look. In addition, we began painting all the casework and cabinets throughout the building, which used to be red, and I think so far the results have been outstanding. At Locust Valley Intermediate, we installed drop ceilings and LED lighting in the faculty lounge, installed a new soccer, turf soccer area out of playground turf for the kids to utilize during their recess, and we replaced the old auditorium stage curtains with new inherently flame-resistant curtains as well. At Bayville Primary, we replaced the storm-damaged roof over the main portion of the building, created an additional faculty bathroom next to the main office, we reset a collapsing stormwater drain in the main parking lot, and we replaced some water valves throughout the building. The replacement of these valves allows us to isolate sections of the building now for when we have to do repairs, making it much faster and easier for us to complete the work. At Bayville Intermediate, we completed the beatment of three areas of flooring and installed new flooring, and we milled and overlaid the parking lot, which was definitely needed there. At the bus garage, the Locust Valley Maintenance Crew, we just created a new office space for the newly hired bus dispatcher, which are the two bottom-left photos. And in addition, we installed a new above-ground storage tank for waste oil to replace a failing old tank. At the administration building, we recently completed the total renovation of the accounting office. This was the last space that needed to be renovated in the building. This work was completed by both the Locust Valley maintenance staff and outside contractors. In addition, districts, to all the work that I've just mentioned, the district staff had completed over 375 work orders to date during this current school year. So we do still have a current, few ongoing projects throughout the district. The most major is the gasoline replacement tank at the bus garage. This was a 32-year-old tank that we're replacing. The work is progressing very nicely and on schedule, and we hope to resume operation sometime next week. A few of the other ongoing projects are the upgrading of the lockdown and intrusion systems. We're gonna integrate them into our Verkata system. This will allow us to have more control over the systems, as well as save us money in the future, as we will no longer have to pay for central monitoring of these systems. We are also in the process of replacing our aging building management system at the middle school, high school with a more up-to-date system. This will give us more control over maintaining the temperatures throughout the building. And finally, we are about to begin the upgrade of the HVAC- And finally, we are about to begin the upgrade of the HVAC system in the big ban room at 164 at the middle school, high school, to include air conditioning. We expect this to be completed sometime in early July. All right. Next, I would like to just let you know about some of the capital projects that we'll be working on this coming summer. The first is the replacement of the slate roof at the Bayville Intermediate School. The existing roof is past its life expectancy and has become dangerous and hazardous during windstorms. The project will commence on June 30th and should be completed late July, early August, depending on the weather. The other capital project that will be occurring this summer also is at Bayville Intermediate, and is the installation of a turf field. This existing field had very poor drainage, which has led to muddy conditions and areas that could not be played on by students or outside organizations. The design of this new field was completed with input from our athletic director, Danielle Turner, and community sports organizations as well. The new turf will be lined for soccer, 7v7 soccer, lacrosse, flag football, softball, and baseball. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that this new turf will not contain any of the black chrome rubber that you typically see, that it'll be a shorter, napped sports turf, very similar to a playground turf, which will utilize a shock pad and sand. And the plan for this field is to utilize it both for the middle school and high school sports as needed, but then for the community organizations as well. Basically, the system for using the field will be the same. Everybody will have to just go through ML schedules through my office. That is it. Thank you very much for your time. And does anybody have any questions or comments or anything?
Just a quick question. The turf at BI, is there dugouts that are being put in?
Oh, yeah. So about, so we actually changed the location of the baseball diamonds. You can kind of see that they're catty-corner now. Right now, they're both on the same side of the field. This way, games can be played at the same time. So we're not going to put in traditional dugouts. They'd be very similar to what they are now. They'll just be caged dugouts. And in the future, if we needed to cover them or something, if it gets, you know, we play more middle school sports there or something like that, we'll maybe look into covering it.
Is it possible to put awnings on the dugouts? I have to say, we've been over in Oyster Bay at the fields, those beautiful turf fields in Oyster Bay in the heart of town, and they have covered dugouts, which make the world of difference when you have inclement weather.
I can look into it and see if we can do it with no additional cost.
Thanks, Eric.
Worth a try.
Thank you, Eric. The thing that I want the community to really note is the page after page after page of major work that is going on while we're fully in session. There is unbelievable effort by Eric and his team, let alone the 375 other individual work orders on top of everything. But all of that work that's going on consistently and continuously to improve our facilities. So thank you, Eric.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Eric.
Moving on to unfinished business, we have a second reading and adoption of the Concussion Management Policy Number 5139. Do I have a motion for that? Margaret, second. Lauren, all those in favor? It's unanimous. New business. We have a few items this evening to discuss. The first up is to discuss our food service offerings.
Thanks, George. I know we've had a very long meeting, so I will try and kind of zip through these fairly quickly. I did want to bring back up the food service offerings. I did know there was a survey that had gone out to parents and students in the last couple months. Kristin, I didn't know if you'd be able to possibly bring back some feedback from Aramark on the survey results. The precipice of moving to Aramark, I guess it is like four years ago now, was that we had toured Manhasset schools. And one of the things that was very appealing to us was that their entire food offering was made 100% from scratch. And I think if we're talking about health and wellness, and we're talking about, you would do a lot of conversations about mental health, but I think the easiest way for us to really tackle this is, you know, what you eat and how you move. And so those are the things that I've outlined today. I would love to see what our plans are and start solidifying some more long-term planning surrounding how we move to more scratch-based food, moving away from processed foods, moving away from the excess offering of cheese products, pizza-type products. We have an incredibly dedicated staff. They've done a tremendous job in our cafeterias. We went to them and said, "You have to cut up all the fruit by hand now. You have to cut up all the veggies by hand. You have to start making things from scratch," and they took it on masterfully. So I applaud them for it, and I think we can definitely start to make some movement in that area. We want to make sure that we have healthy kids. I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to add about food service? We'll circle back. The other thing I wanted to bring up is outdoor play. This has been something that I've been focused on since I started here in the board. And up until two, up until a year ago, when kids arrived at school in the morning in the elementary level, they went outside. I know that there were a lot of factors that played into the change of moving and shifting to indoor arrival, but I think we're missing the mark of giving kids an opportunity, whether it's another 15, 20 minutes to be outdoors year-round, get some of their energy out before sitting in their seats. I think the more energy they can, they can get out, the more attention and focus they'll have when they walk in the door. And I think it's incumbent upon us to find every last opportunity to get our children outside. Movement is paramount, and unfortunately, the state continues to put more and more effort into classroom instruction time and requirements that need to be handled throughout the day. We don't have any minutes left. And so I think we have to start looking at creative ways to get students outside and playing. And not just going out with their class to sit and read a story, but unstructured play, figuring things out on the monkey bars, figuring things out on the schoolyard. So I don't know if it's possible, Dr. Turnout, to, maybe we could do a little bit of a study on what it would look like to bring that back? Or if there's challenges, if there's a way for us to find an alternative to that? Anybody have any discussion?
I agree.
So what did it, because I just wasn't aware, what was the, they had outdoor time before the school day started?
Yeah. So when they used to arrive off the bus, they were sent directly to the playgrounds. So they would go outside. Usually, if you went, drove by BP or BI or any of the elementaries in the morning, you would see hundreds of kids out there playing. Especially in the intermediate buildings, the kids would specifically get there early. They would have their parents drop them off early so they could get outside, talk to their friends, play for 20 minutes before they had to go in for the day.
Okay. And what drove the change in, and why it's not doing it now?
I don't know if we had staffing issues. I know that that's been something that was an issue over the last couple of years. Did we have people that were able to be out there? I think it would be worth a look into opportunities to bring the students back outside.
Lauren, I agree with you. I think it's the right move. I know my, my kids personally really enjoyed it when it was available to them. So agreed, Dr. Turnout, if there's anything we can do to sort of just reevaluate the possibility. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll get you all the information.
Thank you so much.
It's funny. I remember one of the first meetings that I was at, we discussed our, our school food. And then we also discussed playing and playground. And it was coming on the heels of, at AMP, they have the Bring the Parent to Lunch Day or whatnot. And it struck me at the time that they had such a short amount of time to eat the little ones that I was sitting there helping multiple kids try to open, whether they had a packed lunch or a school lunch, they couldn't even open the food in time before it was, okay, we've got to go to recess.
Yes.
And we worked on it. We gave them an extra 10 minutes, I think, on the lunch period.
And 10 minutes of recess.
And then 10 minutes of recess. And I really want to stress that we want to make sure that continues going forward, so the kids can eat, be able to digest, breathe for a second, and then go, continue to play.
Thanks, George. And to that end, I will, that does segue into the resolution. So one of the responsibilities of board members throughout the country is to kind of act as a lobbying arm of the community. And each year, we have an opportunity to draft and submit resolutions to the New York State School Board Association. And basically, these are items that we feel they should advocate for. And our goal usually is to find other, is to share these resolutions with other districts throughout Long Island, look to gain support. Locust Valley has been very active in the resolution process over the years. And I've put together six resolutions that I'd like to present to the group tonight for consensus to see if we have an interest in submitting to the New York State School Board Association. And I'll kind of zip through them. The first one has to do with advocating for the creation and or expansion through Title I or similar comparable state funding streams, specifically for special education students to attend out-of-district summer camps, including costs for programs and transportation. As many of you are aware, we've discussed at numerous board meetings, unfortunately, the district is legally not allowed to pay for out-of-district programs. So out-of-district summer camps, out-of-district busing. But we do receive quite a few grants. And so we, I would like to put up this resolution for them to advocate for these type of programs to be included in grant funding that the schools receive. The rationale being students with disabilities benefit significantly from consistent year-round educational and developmental programming to prevent regression and support academic, social, and emotional growth. And the current structure of our extended-year, school-year program, it does not meet the needs of all of our students in our special education department. So we do have students that go, thankfully, there are some great programs here on Long Island, but it would be wonderful if the school could work towards receiving grant monies for those programs. I don't know if there's any comment, conversation, maybe a show of hands if we'd like to move forward with that one?
I think that you should vote as you discuss each one. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, because to do all six and then go back, I think.
Do you want to take a show of hands on who would like to move forward with this? Excellent. Okay, the next one. The New York State School Board Association shall advocate for the following policy changes: substantial increases in state reimbursement rates for out-of-district special education placements to reflect true and current costs, including transportation and related services; reform of the excess cost aid formula to ensure more equitable and timely distribution of funding, particularly to districts facing a high proportion of costly mandated placements relative to total enrollment; and the establishment of an emergency or contingency aid program to assist districts experiencing year-over-year spikes in special education placement costs. What we've seen as far as all of our budgeting in the past two or three years is that the formulas are very antiquated. And they've focused a lot on the foundation aid and the formulas, but unfortunately, haven't necessarily dived into all the other components of aid. And so I do believe that this is an area, especially for out-of, out-of-district placements, students who are attending any schools that are outside of the, our current buildings here in the district. We're very fortunate, again, to have wonderful programs, but they are very costly. And so I think it's a piece of the aid that we definitely should have, you know, some more eyes on. Any questions? Input? Show of hands and who'd like to move forward? Unanimous? The third is the New York State School Board Association shall advocate to the New York State Education Department, the United States Department of Agriculture, and federal legislators for the reinstatement of whole milk as an allowable option in school breakfast and lunch. I know it sounds small, but children are only able to get low-fat milk product. There have been a lot of studies that have come out over the years that show that there's a lot of essential nutrients and healthy fats that are beneficial for growing children. And I think it would be beneficial for us to bring it back. It was taken out some years ago. And it would also allow for more partnership with regional dairy farmers, particularly in New York State. We're one of the nation's leading dairy-producing states. It would definitely align with our agriculture goals in the state of New York.
Lauren, I have a question for this one.
Yes.
So would our food services provider, Aramark, enter into a partnership then with the regional farmers? Can we guarantee that they would source their milk product from them?
So we can set parameters in our contracts, but unfortunately, the law does not allow for whole milk. And so really, this is just an opportunity for us to lobby for the replacement or the addition of whole milk as an option for, for students in addition to low fat.
So I know that there is a Whole Milk for Healthy Kids Act currently on the Senate floor. I believe that bill is projected to pass and will inform the National School Lunch Program's guidance in terms of reintegrating whole milk back into the guidance for schools. I am totally for advocating for this. Why not give parents and children more choice? The only thing I would ask is whether or not we could also add on to this lobbying for the availability of water, whether it's served in a carton or something like that. Number one, we have a lot of dairy-based menu options. I would say, in terms of my own review of the lunch program, there are a lot of meals that are centered around cheese, like grilled cheese, pizza sticks, pizza.
Too many.
A lot. So the point about the water is that potable water, yes, they're allowed to have potable water. So maybe even then, if we just make cups available, because I know logistically, the kids have a hard time bringing water bottles to the cafeteria. So maybe we could just think about that.
Totally. Because they go right from lunch to recess.
Right.
None of the kids want to carry their water bottles.
Right. So I'm totally in support of this bill. I just wanted to have that for conversation. Thanks.
Thanks, Holly. And hopefully, this will push our state association to back that legislation. And maybe we could add some language, if you want, to the resolution, just noting, like just a note of the legislation.
When you write resolutions, they have to be very specific. You're going, you're going after, you're going against something that has been removed. Water has not been removed, so I'm not, I'm not arguing.
No, no, no. I'm saying the legislation for the milk. The milk.
The milk.
Yeah.
Just keep it.
Just the milk. We can make a reference of that bill on the floor.
Yep, for sure. The next.
All those in favor?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All those in favor? Yep. Good.
Thank you. The next resolution, which is something that we've put up multiple times and continue to, the New York State School Board Association shall advocate for legislation that restores the religious exemption to vaccine mandates for school attendance, ensuring that families with sincerely-held religious beliefs are not excluded from public, private, or parochial educational systems. Students are not denied access to vital educational services, including special ed, as a result of exercising their religious rights, and that state policy reflects a balance between public health and individual constitutional freedoms in alignment with national norms observed by the majority of U.S. states. The rationale being, New York, our current vaccine policy lacks the flexibility afforded by almost all states throughout the country. We are one of only a handful that do not have a religious exemption, which is Mississippi, West Virginia, California, and Maine. Along with those states, New York does not, does not allow for any religious exemption to vaccines. And it places us amongst the most restrictive in the nation on this issue. Anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. And last but not least, one of our least favorite topics. Hoping that the School Board Association can advocate for the following: a repeal or suspension of the electric school bus mandate until a full feasibility study is completed for every school district across the state, with particular attention to infrastructure readiness and financial impact; substantial and sustained state funding, not just for the purchase of electric buses, but for the full scope of infrastructure improvements and energy grid upgrades required to implement the transition; an exemption or alternative compliance path for districts and areas with demonstratable geographic, financial, or utility constraints, such as those present in Locust Valley Central School District and other similar situated Long Island districts. And rationale being, while the goal of reducing emissions is commendable, this mandate is currently written, it's impractical. currently written, it's impractical and potentially damaging to educational programs and financial stability across the state where we'd have to be diverting funds to these programs. The idea sounds great, but NISBA should be leading in advocacy for practical, flexible, and locally-informed environmental solutions. I know that in conversations, even just regarding our, our parking lot, we've had conversations with local, I guess, grid companies who have informed us of some of the difficulty in running that amount of power to a district located where we are. We are at the end of the grid. And so, not only is this an unfunded mandate, where you have to buy electric buses, which are more expensive than diesel, but then, in order to house those buses, there needs to be more space between each bus, which is another mandate, which we do not have. And in addition, it would probably force our district to go completely to using a third party. And we are at the mercy, unfortunately, here with one bus option, which is Hendrickson. We do not have any other bus companies that bid on our work.
Lauren, I, I think this is an essential resolution. I think it needs to be reworded.
Okay.
We need to take Locust Valley out. It can't, resolutions can't be specific.
Okay.
But I also think that it should be a more direct resolution. The bottom line is, the infrastructure cost for the batteries is unsustainable for any district. I actually don't even know why NISBA hasn't, nobody wants this in the whole entire state. No organization wants it, no union wants it, nobody wants it. So I think it needs to be, like, literally, an abandoned, you know, we are lobbying for you to abandon any and all electric bus mandates, period. I think that's how simple it has to be. The one thing we've learned about resolutions, you know, Lauren and I, through the years, is the more words you put in, then there's more arguments and discussion from all the different districts. We have 750 districts that have to vote on this. Keep it simple, nobody wants it, and just make it streamlined. That would be my advice. But we can approve it tonight and then, you know, work on the language.
I think we're all, I mean, can we get a show of hands of who's in favor of a simple resolution abolishing all electric bus mandates?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Lauren, do you remember, and I, I should know that, I can look it up, but I will ask quickly, do you remember where NISBA landed on this last year?
They're advocating.
They're advocating for it.
They're still advocating.
Yeah, they're still advocating.
But there probably was, like, five resolutions from different parts of the state, all against it. And everybody for different reasons. Upstate, they can't charge the buses enough. Sometimes their districts have a hundred-mile radius, and there's no place to charge the bus. And then, they also have issues with the climate, you know, the snowy weather, and the buses, they're apparently, they just perform differently in the snow. We were at the NISBA convention, and as we were leaving, do you remember this, Lauren? They were towing the electric bus because it broke down.
Oh, yes, in Buffalo. We were at the convention, and we walk out, and it broke down, and they had to tow away the electric bus in front of thousands of school board members across the state of New York. So, all right. And the last one tonight, the New York State School Board Association shall advocate for amendments to New York State Education Department regulations to allow a set amount of daily recess time, up to 30 minutes per day, to count towards required instructional hours for elementary students. It's very simple. We're, we're requiring mental health, we're requiring a lot of other areas of our health, and yet, we're not requiring recess. So I think it would ease the burden of school districts if recess is counted as instructional minutes towards the day. Yes, Nick? Oh, you're, oh, voting. Thank you. Okay.
You know, I thought it was, you know, no explanation needed that that is critical.
Thank you.
I just went right ahead and voted.
That concludes our 2025 resolutions.
Thank you, Lauren.
Lauren, thank you very much for putting these all together. They're excellent. Thank you.
Just a quick presentation, we'll bring these back to the reorg in their final form and make a motion to suspend them.
Correct. And I think that'll, as long as it's before the date.
Yeah, the deadline.
Are meeting, well, we'll actually.
Excellent.
Excellent.
What is the NISBA deadline?
Sixteen.
Sixteen is mine.
Moving on, new business, we have the first reading of a revised policy, policy number 5100, student attendance. And we want to, do we have a motion to walk on policy number 5280?
Can I actually, a quick presentation for the nation? Are we adopting the version that's already designed?
No.
Are you making a change to the policy?
It's a change to the policy, to the original revised policy that was reviewed by the policy committee. I think we can get you the version.
Version's here.
What?
The version is here.
We have the version, if you want us to leave it with you. Okay. Did you need a second, George?
Yes, a second, please. Lauren, all those in favor?
It's unanimous, so we are doing a first reading of policy number 5280, which will be posted on the website as well. The next order of business is the adoption of the revised 25, 26 district school calendar. So something that was raised, and Ken's going to come up and talk to us a little bit about this. This came up because another couple of neighboring districts, but one neighboring district had, because they did not use all of their snow days, they had allotted, right, the usual one to two days of snow days. Since they didn't use them, they then provided an additional day off in the spring for the whole district. So we asked the admin to go back and take a look at this, and Ken actually discovered a small error in our calendar that we had approved initially as well. So I'll leave it to him to sort of explain, but that way, we can adopt a revised calendar for next year.
So credit on the fine goes to Jen Massa, not myself. I was just the person that she told. And so, so the adopted calendar, if you look at the picture, you'll notice that the 28, 29, and 30, that's actually, the 30th is actually a Tuesday in real life. And so, we double-counted, and basically, we, we intended to make a 182-day calendar with two snow days built in, but what we actually did was build 181-day calendar with two snow days. So, sorry, with one snow day. So, the, so, the New York State has a requirement for 180 days. With the two superintendent's conference days that we have traditionally planned, that's fine, that's 178 days of instruction with two built-in snow days. That's what we normally do every year. And we also, every year, have, well, historically, we have not given back unused days. Okay? So that's just fact of what we've been doing ever since I've been here, 15, 16 years now. So, and one last point is that when we built the district safety plans, New York State mandated the safety plans, we're required to have an emergency closure plan for remote instruction. And so, what we've been doing is, any, if we close beyond two days, we would shift to a remote instruction. So that's just a matter of fact.
So, Ken, if we had a third snow day, that third snow day would not be a traditional snow day.
Right.
It would be remote instruction.
It would be a remote instruction. And you, as the board, have the ability to allocate more days before that happens, if you choose, and, but then, we would be peeling back more holidays, right? So the Friday before Memorial Day would come off as the third day if you didn't go to remote. Okay? Okay. So I came up with three, these, I came up with three solutions, but these are not the only three solutions. So one solution is just add a day of school. And the day of school would be, we right now, we currently, right now, have both Friday before Memorial Day and the Tuesday after Memorial Day off. So we have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday off. That's, that day, the 26th, is unlike any other district, and so, if, that would likely be the day that we would peel back to make 182 days, and we would be all good. Another option, so that would be what we traditionally do or have done. In looking at other calendars around, other calendars, what they do is they will, they'll schedule 182 days, and they will say ahead of time, if we don't use both of our snow days, we will not be in session on the 26th of May. Okay? So we could do that. And then, a third one is, do, this is what Roslin does. They schedule one snow day now. And after one snow day, they, they switch to remote. And in this, you would guarantee closure of the, on the 26th, if you went with this model. So you have a model where you're not going to designate anything, model one. Model two, you could designate the 26th, and if it's, if we have an unused snow day, you'd get it back. Everybody would plan and understand what the deal is. And the third one is, you could guarantee the 26th as a vacation, as a off day, but you would have to pivot to remote after the first snow day.
I go for version two.
Yeah, I definitely would pick version two over all this. I just see issues occurring with version three, that, you know, if kids are heavily relying on the technology given, and there's no access to it, and we're switching right to a remote.
Yep.
There's going to be a lot of missed attendance.
Yeah, and by the way, in the remote, in the remote plan, there is a requirement to have a synchronous component, which is, obviously, for all the reasons that we've been talking about this evening, is difficult to do in the elementary, because the devices are not home. Right? So, yes, big challenge.
Other comments, questions? And just so the community's clear, I mean, I'm in favor of number two as well, but the, we, I mean, Margaret just said, which is right, we haven't used snow days in, in years now, right?
Yeah.
But just so the community understands, in the event that we go beyond the two days for some reason, that, that 26 would be the give-back day, correct?
If you, yeah, if you use, if you, if you, if you do not use both snow days.
Right.
You will make no school on the May 26th. Okay?
And if you use one snow day, you'd still not have school on the 26th, correct?
Correct. That's right.
But you don't get back the one, the first snow day. If you have no snow days, you only get back one day.
You can do, it's your discussion, you can do what you want. If you can, as a board, decide that, you know, if you don't use the snow days, you give both of them back. That's your, that's in your space. Will still meet the minimum of the state requirement. That's why I said, there's a lot of different choices. I gave three just to get it going. So if you wanted to, if you wanted to designate both.
Well, Siasa just gives them back. Like, let's just, let's just give them back.
Yeah.
If we don't use them, let's just give them back.
So we just would have to designate what is going to be the second day that you would give back?
Correct. Maybe the 18th of June?
Oh.
I don't know, it's another four-day weekend.
Well, this year, yeah.
For this year.
For this year.
Yeah, that's, it's, that's in Regents Week, though, so that might be, yeah.
I mean, I'm just going by where I just was, but they gave Thursday, Friday, I mean, it was a long, long weekend for Memorial Day. They did Thursday, Friday, and then Tuesday.
Yeah.
We can do that?
It was a real long weekend.
We could end school early.
And there's no, and that's George. And there's no, there's no testing around there.
Right.
You got, you don't start the Regents yet, and the AP and the IBs are done, you're safe there, no matter what.
Yeah, come, there are early Regents in June, so that's always a tricky thing.
I think it's worthwhile for you guys to go back and take a look at what is the second day that we could then give back. And I think it's worthwhile to try to give the two days back this upcoming next year, because in the event that there comes up another holiday that ends up getting required or mandated, we may end up losing a little bit of that flexibility. So while we have it, we should use the opportunity to give the second day back, if it's possible.
So can, can, just so that we can make the, just because we have a correct, I want to correct what is incorrect. So it would be great if we could maybe adopt a calendar and know that we're going to come back to it in July to designate the second day?
Perfect.
So we'll give you your, we'll give you a recommendation?
Got it. Perfect, that works.
Does that work?
Thank you.
Okay. So there's, so we're going to, just to be clear, we're going to adopt where the middle solution right now, and I'm going to come back at the July 8th meeting, and we'll give you another option that you can choose from.
So we're going to approve or revise?
There's too many options with this group.
There's only going to be one option.
One option, there's not an option, just one.
Yeah, one.
So we're going to approve.
I just need you to approve it, yeah.
We're going to approve revision for the school calendar, 25, 26, right now, that adds a day and designates a contingency day, and then in July, we will have revision number two. All right?
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Margaret, Nick on second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
We have the adoption and/or abolishment of policies, adoption of revised policies 45, 26, 45, 31, 47, 30, and 47, 40. Those are computer network and acceptable use, field trips and excursions, homework, and honor rolls respectively, and the abolishment of policy number 56, 95, students and personal electronic devices. Do I have a motion for that?
Margaret?
Second. Christina? All those in favor? We have the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board member would like pulled? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Matt? Do I have a second? Holly? All those in favor? Do we have any public comment to end our meeting? Nope. So, as, this is the last meeting of our school year. Everyone, please have a wonderful, safe, and enjoyable summer recess. Do know that we will all still be working, as Margaret said, free of charge. And we have our reorg meeting July 8th, as well as a meeting again in August, and perhaps a second one in August, depending on the personnel needs of the district. So please, we encourage everyone to still come out, get home safely this evening, and a happy early Father's Day to everyone. Have a wonderful weekend, everyone. Bye-bye. Oh, sorry. Motion to end. Nick, second. Lauren, all those in favor? Unanimous. Get home safe, everybody.